August first, twenty twenty-three. Public comments. Eric.
I came in last Monday to a few messages regarding a hole in our Green River Bridge that we just decided to repair, not a small hole, but enough for my leg to go through. I had Travis come down and take a look. He covered it. Actually, I think you had responded to it that week, the weekend before. Travis covered it with a lot of metal clay that I believe he borrowed from our friends in Rome's end. And a few other soft spots were shored up with some three-quarter plywood to get us through until it was repaired. We measured from the LCT came down, took a look at our insurance perspective, which put that machine good as far as liability is concerned, because we made the proper repairs. But if you see cones or sign it or anything weird on the bridge, that's there as soon as possible.
That's great. Other public comments? Yes.
I'm Maris Diver, nobody's ever. I just need a little bit of clarification if it's appropriate. As in light of the recent dismissal of our library director, is he an employee of the town? And if so, were all the steps gone through? And if so, the last one says there would be concurrence with the select board. So did this left or concur with this dismissal? Did you not know about it? Do you not have to? I'm just not sure I understand the government, the how it works with the license.
Do you want to speak to that, or do you want me to? Scott, it's always the library liaison. Sure, so. There was definitely a procedure and there were steps taken. It's not like this was something that just happened. If you go through their minutes, yes, that then you saw that there, you know, there's like at least like that I think about two hours where they're saying, you know, I don't think you get to see that executive session, but where he's in there and.
We didn't know what was going on in there.
Sure, of course. Yes. Yes, so the idea would be that, you know, some there is a procedure and. They followed it.
And then at the end, when they decided to do it for the best interest of the town, did the select board confer with that decision? Because that put a tip in the town's policy of dismissal. I read that on.
The town's policy concerning the library?
No, concerning dismissals of employees. So that was my initial question. Is he an employee of the town? And if that, if he isn't, then you don't have to confer.
Well, I know that we're not involved in hiring anybody.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
Which, which we are here when we hire people, we are very involved in it. So I would consider that, that you're not involved in the dismissal of people as well. And I know that the trust, the things I do know are the trustees consulted legal. And they also, when the employee was dismissed, they asked us to have locks changed, and we did that because the town owns the bill. It's our building. We pay for every dime of maintenance, upkeep, service, you know, repairs, we do it all. So it's our building. So if we change locks.
Which is not an uncommon procedure when an employee, when someone who is in a position to have, you know, liberal access to a building is let go. It's not at all uncommon for locks to be changed.
Thank you. Other comments? Cause I have several. Okay. First, I am very pleased on behalf of the board to announce that Mike Arborcast will be the next police chief in the town of Dover. He has accepted the offer with the select board made. And upon Randy Johnson's retirement, my garbage gas will be our new police chief, and we will formally move to hire him at that time. Uh, second, I would like to, and Travis isn't here tonight, but I'd like to. Oh, hi Travis. Am I, I hope I'm not stealing your thunder. I want to congratulate Chris, Abra, and Jimmy Sprague for coming in second in the northeast chapter of the American Public Works Association, Snowplow, Roveo, on July twenty-seventh in Boxborough, Massachusetts. So that was very, that was amazing. And I think it's Jimmy's second year as second place. Am I correct?
It is, yes.
And I also feel that that we failed to announce that back in May, Travis teamed up with one of our employees, who is ex-employees, who's now the road commissioner in Marlboro, correct?
Yes.
Andrew Richardson?
Yep.
And they won the Vermont clown championship. And then Jimmy Sprague and Chris Abra came in second. So out of all of, all the teams, we came in first and second in the snowplow in the state of Vermont.
We did, yes.
So we have very, we have a very talented team of highway operators.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Congratulations. Okay, and then thirdly, I've been contacted by. BDCC about a program that they are starting to help support people who might want to get on boards or as volunteers in the town. They're looking for a champion on the select board to recruit people for this. They are also asking for support that we potentially support our delegates at a hundred and fifty dollars a person to go up to a training program. So they're trying to get more diverse involvement in town boards and also in volunteer positions. So if anybody's interested in that, I will forward that email to Jeanette. She will have it. So if somebody would like to do that, that's great. But I don't give, I'm not giving you a lie and posting. You might want to just read it.
Read it first.
Okay, what else? Anything else under public comments? Okay, during none, we're going to move on to Consider a Work Request for Green Mountain Power in the East Dover ROW. And we have tonight with us.
Should I sit up here and ceder?
Yeah, you should. I'm sorry, could you say your name?
Tim Jones.
Tim. And we received a packet with all of this information.
Well, thank you. Tim Jones from Green Mountain Power. Appreciate the opportunity to appear here tonight. And Jeanette's facilitation of getting us on the calendar so quickly. This is a follow-up to our leadership group being in the area at the end of an extremely difficult winter, most especially in your interest in the Eastover area, but also in the towns of Ward's Borough and Townsend, where our VH four line suffered, you know, some, some trouble. And so what I'm here to do right now is to follow up and I'll just kind of back up a little bit. We've been to Townsend and we've been to Ward's Borough, and this is our third stop, obviously, that encompasses this VH four line, which essentially starts from the Scott Covered Bridge in Townsend and ends roughly on North Street, Jockey Hollow or the Locust Heights area. So there's two projects across all the towns. Townsend has approved our permit request, I believe, tonight. Ward's Borough is granting their final approval, hopefully. And tonight is our third meeting, and I love doing business in one meeting, but understand there's a lot at play here. And so just our working, you know, process here really has been to obviously come present this, shade in, you know, some additional detail and certainly elaborate on the body of this agreement as we work through any questions about this. As part of our due diligence, our operations supervisor out of our Brattleboro district supervises this area, has been in contact with Travis just to explain some of the means and methods that we are looking to employ to completely rebuild this line, like you said, from Townsend, Monmouth, Ward's Borough, and Dover. So the, the map sets that I provided is, as well as the boilerplate here for these two projects are a little bit more on the side of the traditional overhead building of, of poles and wires. What you see out there today, obviously, in this menagerie of roads here, there's, it's all overhead already. And if you know the area, then you know we have long stretches of line that go way out cross-country and lead the road. That was sort of the method of, of construction back in the day under VEC. So what we're looking to do, and this depicts really more of a traditional overhead configuration of pulling all those lines to the roadside. And so that's what you'll see in the maps. The blue depicts proposed new construction. And for the most part, you'll see, you know, a zigzag down the roads. Some of it is depicted being rebuilt. You'll see also some blue dotted line, which depicts underground construction where as we're interacting with landowners along the way, they may request in exchange for the reason of, well, I'd like to see that underground. I don't want to see poles and wires in front of my house anymore. So we'll go ahead and bury that. As times have a volunteer, especially within the last probably, you know, twenty-four months, undergrounding has become a prime tool for us to use. And in this situation here in the VH four A, we are going to be looking to bury as much as we can. And I guess I'll use the terminology of a mainline express. And so the real ask here tonight is we're depicting a traditional overhead build, but as part of our work also this spring with the legislature, Green Mountain Power leading the charge of getting a two-year exemption from Act two fifty, that allows us to look at jobs like this. And if jobs meet a certain profile, we're able to not go through Act two fifty, but sort of the meat and potatoes is coming to the town and getting the town's permission to do our work. So what that allows us to do obviously is be within the town limits and engages a lot of the length and legwork that we go through for getting individual private easements or reworking easements that we already have in place. So the ask and what I would elaborate on here is where it's feasible, our preference is to bury this mainline in the road. And I have all the roads listed out here. I can just read them off of record, North Street, Jockey Hollow Road, Locust Heights, Jenny Road, I believe, I heard pollen and Robbins Road. And there would still be overhead left behind to pick up existing services or taps off of our line. So really the big ask of the town is to have the flexibility where the conditions permit for us to bury our line no less than five feet offset from the road shoulder. But so more or less towards the center of the road, we endeavor to get at least a four-foot burial depth for this cable and conduit, which is a one-piece cable. The conductor is actually inside a conduit, so either vibratory plow or traditional backhoe method opens the road and this gets laid in. And we can go about a thousand or fifteen hundred feet at a time. And at that point, then we'd have some sort of termination or slicing cabinet possibly off on the shoulder of the road to continue that. And of course, anywhere we have services to pick up, there'd be riser poles. Or if we had to avoid something underground, like a box culvert or something like that, we can come up and go down under. What we have been proposing to the other towns is for regular culverts, you know, that are in the road. The Green Mountain Power will cover the cost of either replacing those culverts. If they are, haven't been replaced, so you need to work with your, your road superintendent just to see where you're at in a culvert program. If we were coming, by example, if we were to come through a culvert that was just recently installed, we would take it out, bury our line and reinstall it. If you came across the culvert that hadn't gotten replaced yet, we would also do the same thing and maybe ask for a cost share from the town if they could actually give us the culvert material. We would go ahead and reinstall the culverts. And any road damage, obviously, Green Mountain Power indemnifies the town. So we say we install our conductor and we have another storm like we just experienced. But in driving these roads, it looks like, you know, the middle of the road's a pretty safe place most part. But obviously, you know, we have procedures in place for, you know, rebuilding the road to the town spec. And then if there was any sort of trouble addressing that and work with the town. But the, the, the real premise of burying it is, and I think the terminology we like to say is, you know, bury and forget it. And that's really sort of the, the calculus of having overhead lines and the maintenance and the trimming and, and, and the right of way and easements to go along with that. Certainly burying that really takes a lot of that out of play. And the expectation is that it's not something that needs to be maintained and it's, it's a trouble-free environment. As I said, we'll still have some overhead work to, to pick up individual services or taps. And then also part of that is working with all the telecommunications partners, which is a universal piece of feedback that we get that okay, Green Mountain Power is going to move, what about? What about telecommunications? Are we going to see double pole lines in our towns and those types of things? So we are working on that to lead the charge with those telecommunications partners existing and future that want to run through these areas to bring them with us. So that's, you know, it's a big effort for us, but we realize it's a a big consideration for many towns. And it's a feedback that we get not only from municipalities, but also our, our partners at VT Trans as we work to rebuild our system. Those are the highlights. Again, the ask is a little bit more traditional than the maps, or a little bit more traditional overhead build, which is how these projects were designed some years ago and conceived. Technology now allows us to go underground. So part of our ask is almost a design build type of scenario where welcoming, you know, Travis or obviously the board to go out, look at some areas and we can demonstrate what, what we proposed to do. Certainly take any other feedback from the town in terms of worry or concern about this method. And from that, just building out an agreement and having clear communication where we're going to be, what the style of build is going to be, what we're encountering. If there's any other permitting that we have to deal with, we'll certainly deal with that. But by and large, these, these runs look pretty clean and being in the road, except four feet, we can't make four feet in some instances. If we get three feet, there's some concrete encasement that will be applied if we can't get our ideal road depths. But that's sort of the nuts and bolts of it and certainly welcome any and all questions or certifications to what we're asking for. Thank you.
I have a ton. So I might as well start timeline.
We are proposing to be in there as soon as we get permission. I was in Townsend today, getting started on the first couple of projects in Townsend with our contractor. So that's starting this week. We'll be setting poles, we'll be trimming. If Ward's Borough approves, move on to the next project. So in a perfect world, October.
October. And you would be coming in from the North Street, Jockey Hollow side of the town?
Yeah, so it'll be the Ward's Borough projects and roughly New Fane Road. And then we'll make the turn up and come up into North Road. So not everything between here and there is going to be rebuilt. There's certainly some, you know, things that have been rebuilt over time. So there are some segments that we'll skip. But by and large, that's sort of where we would start in North Street and work our way all the way down North Street. And then start picking up all of these other side roads that I mentioned as well. So given that it's August, just assuming, you know, if there's more follow-up from tonight, additional meeting, what have you, just kind of taking August off the plate in terms of, of start and just where we are, it'll take them a couple of months to, to make progress. But if we have all, if we have all three towns permission simultaneously, there's nothing preventing us from starting here and you still.
But you wouldn't do any trenching before winter, would you?
That's, that would, yes, that would be the install process is, is burying it in the road before winter.
And.
And be done.
Okay. Are you letting property owners know that this project is coming?
We do. We will kick off in these communities. So we're going to do that in Townsend. If this, we'll go back, obviously, to all the landowners that we've contacted for easement. So anybody that's actually granted us an easement, and if we no longer want to run the line through their property, we'll let them know that we're moving to a road. So in a grand scale, hopefully, most of our work is going to be within the towns. But us.
The, the pole placement?
Yes.
When you come to a property and you're going to need to put one of the feeder poles, as you call it, are you going to allow the property owners to, we've had some issues with potential pole placements and they were not, the property owners didn't approve it at all. So I'm curious, is there, is there a negotiation time? If, for the pole placement, if you, if they don't want it in their, at the end of their driveway where they can't see to make a left or whatever, or is that a consideration?
Yes, and I'll, and we're going to go back, obviously, if, if we're granted this, once we go to design underground, we'll go back and visit all the services just to confirm how those will be picked up. So it's possible that somebody's already got a pole and their service will be fine, you know, to their house. And basically, if we were underground, then we would retrofit that and, you know, bring them up, you know, bring the conductor, drive the pole up and, and complete their service. So that's an opportunity for anybody along the way to say, well, gosh, if I had my druthers, I'd like it ten feet over here or something like that. So certainly the dance floor would be open to, to talk about how that happened. But mostly having people's services are somewhere already to their house. So it's unlikely it's going to deviate a lot, but some people are served from behind and some people will be served from the road. So you're right, you never.
So the amount of trees that are, we're going to lose to have an idea?
Yeah. This is intended to preserve. And I think we had this conversation with Townsend. Know that the area, you know, the trophy trees, stone walls, like being in the road avoids it. And that's, you know, traditionally, you know, you spend a lot of money on your ditch lines as well. So we don't want to be in the dish line or up on the hillside or anything on the ground that's going to impact the trees. So if we're down the middle of the road, it's down the middle of the road and we're out of any any tree line that way.
Okay.
So that's a.
Because this, these are roads that traditionally have not had any kind of wires besides maybe the, the pole right to the house.
Understood.
Uh, in a road a way. So it's kind of affects the aesthetics of the, of the neighborhood.
I drove every inch again today, just to refresh my memory. But yes, it's a, you know, it's, it's a country road with maples and mash and arvins on both sides.
And we do treasure that. So as I'm sure you guys do too.
I live in Facebook.
On the lines.
Living in a very similar community. Yes, so I'm very, very into the.
For now, my last question is, so you're going to have to dig up some pavement. That's going to be a problem, isn't it Travis? Yes, yes. So at that time of year, we can't get pavement down to cover the center trenching.
And we, and as I was looking around today, we just have to go out and quantify how much pavement we're actually talking about. I think ninety-five percent of what we're talking about is under.
A lot is, yes.
Yeah, so there, there, there definitely are a couple of base, base sections. Especially, I think, you know, as North Street meets there and David there. So we will go out there and, and look at that. And again, that's something that we could just stay overhead or something like that, you know.
Well, I'm not saying that you have that, but to do it in the fall before winter, when we all have an opportunity to resurface the road. And there are, yes, North Street, Holland Road, Steep Hill, where Johnny Hollow. Yes, all, which it's, it's great to put it underneath. I completely agree. But the timing of doing it is problematic, seeing as though it's probably going to be October and November when it might be out there. So I, I'm, I'm concerned about the condition of our roads for the winter and for, for plowing and for just wear and tear on the roads. Maybe Travis?
I agree. It's as long as we don't get too late in the year. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm on, I'm on board with the project. I'm willing to work with them. I just, I don't want anything done too late in the year when things are starting to freeze up and we're going to have to, you know, shut it down and get things straightened up so we can take care of them and, you know, the winter season.
Dan?
Second question, now that you're putting power in the road and taking it from overhead, how much will that help alleviate the problems of losing power as we frequently do in these stuff?
Considerably. So there'll be no trees falling out. So getting underground and leaving maybe only services above ground. Again, you don't want anybody to be on our power, but if somebody were to lose, you know, service the way that the configuration will be, it won't be a cascading event. You know, the line will, will be maintained. Again, the continuity over from Route thirty, we also have several other rebuild projects going, all of Route one hundred from Jamaica Trust Bridge down into Dover is being rebuilt as well. So part of our overall focus as a company is redundancy and fear ties and getting ties and closing open points between districts and so forth. So this is part of that. If something happens, you know, there's a fail-safe on the other side. So the conductor is not susceptible to, to tree.
We might consider to put in the lines where the pavement is first. So this way it would mitigate the problem. And the other thing is we pave roads around here. So say Dover Hill Road is being paved. The electric company would consider putting it underground there while it's being paved instead of waiting for afterwards.
Did you get all that?
I did.
Uh, so when is the paving, when's the paving company coming Travis?
Probably September.
Because of all the.
The rain. There, everybody's behind because of the rain. Yeah.
And which road were you talking about?
Dover Hill Road. I believe we're going to, we're going to be repaving some of it. Okay.
So are we just resurfacing it or are we going?
We're grinding.
We're grinding, okay.
We're, we're milling a two-inch depth. We're not, we're not grinding it back to dirt.
And that's starting from the saddle below Holland Road up and over? Is that correct Travis?
Correct. Yes, yep, almost to our town garage. And and then we're doing another stretch from, from Taff Brook Corner, clear to the New Fane Town Line.
Right.
I might have, she can bury the water.
Um, other questions?
So, but that would sound like we do Dover Hill Road. That wasn't one. Yeah, that wasn't one of those. But I have an insurance.
Taking requests now.
And it seems to have no bearing on whether it's raining or not. Um, so will these, these repairs that you're doing to these other roads, which are surrounding Sherman Road, is that going to help us or?
Yes. It's, it'll help the region, you know, so be more resilient. And again, all these are, are facilities are very dated here. Obviously, you all live here and see the poles and the old brittle copper wire. And it really doesn't take much. So storm hardening really is sort of our calling card here. You know, going underground is the best storm hardening technique that we have. Other than that, we're reverting to overhead, putting in tree wire, as it's known, it's a coated wire. I have a little bit more deflection ability to it or doing things shorten span. So as we evolve in the overhead, we're also working on that as well. But yes, overall reliability improvement in the region.
Okay, so I can call you if it doesn't happen. Okay, thank you.
So I have another question. The retired lines?
Yes.
What status will they be? Will they be removed? Will the overhead wires be removed? Will the poles be removed?
Yes.
Oh, yes, well.
Yes, retirement is just that. It's, once the new line is built and energized, then we go back and retire, typically out into the right of way, cut up the conductor, build it up. Poles can be pulled completely out of the ground. They will be. If they can't, they get flush cut. And then whoever's granted the easement, you know, there's a quick claim, you know, process basically returning.
So you're returning this is going to happen.
So you're returning the easements to people. Correct.
So it's kind of a win-win situation, cause people can't do stuff within their easements, so it could help people on that end too.
So, other questions?
So.
Travis.
Yes. Um. I have areas of. There are sections of, I know North Street. And some other areas that I know of. That have. Uh, road and filter fabric. Right down the road. To help sustain these roads from mud season and what have you. And if we go cutting through. This fabric, I need to. We're gonna need to have, you know, have some fabric put back. Or have a way to mend that back up. At time of installation, if you are going under the road.
Sure, a, a similar question, I think, came from one of your other towns, in terms of what we're excavating, how we're separating materials to make sure that the road goes back the way. We found it, uh, the top coat goes back on the weekend, so I would count that Travis is among that. Okay. As we will replace what we dig through.
Okay.
As specific.
Yep, perfect, I, I was just concerned about the fabric, you know, I, I, I have no doubt about what you guys will. Make good on, you know, placement of material, I was just concerned about cutting through that fabric and opening up an area that, you know. Could possibly cause us issues again, that's all.
So Travis. With a project like this seems awful large, it's gonna incur any costs to the town from our staff. To be dealing and checking up with Green Mountain Power to make sure it's done properly.
No, I will, uh, I don't mind working with them on this, I, I would. I would just assume it'd be me if, if I had a say, I would. I would like to be the one to, you know, that they would come to or that I would overs help that work with them.
Well, I'm just trying to, you know. Money coming out of the town to. You know, just wanna make sure it's not gonna be a huge cost or bearings on.
I, I don't. I don't think so, I'm, I'm in, I like what I hear about, you know, the covert replacement. Um, you know, I have plenty of stock, but. Time to change them is. You know, they're gonna come across some and I have. Plenty to give to them to put in, that's great.
Other than the material, like you just mentioned, it's costly to the town, I understand there's some, you know, supervisory. But that's, that's our goal.
I think it's worth it.
Other questions? So. Seeing none, I don't want to sign this tonight, and I'll tell you why, because I, people don't know about it.
Yes.
If we sign it tonight. Nobody's had the opportunity to give. Me feedback, the sports feedback, Travis feedback. There are other questions I'm sure out there, so, uh, it needs to be out there for, for everybody who's affected by this. Because there's a lot of different property owners.
Yes.
Uh, and they haven't been formally notified that this potentially is gonna happen, but. The least that we can do is wait and allow for more concerns and questions to be. Um, that, that we can, we can vet them and, and understand and ask you more questions. Does that seem like a fair thing? I, I would be very upset if, if this kind of thing went through and nobody knew.
So you, you haven't notified any of these landowners in this area at all about what your intention?
So these were again, our right away agent having contact to try and negotiate our way to a, a rebuild here. Uh, now it's. The presumption is if we're all in the town, we could keep some of this, or we can go all to the road, which is our preference in that way. You know, or, but to your point, you know, we want, people wanna see us going by the end of the driveway and that type of stuff, so. Certainly, uh, we have the ability to canvas everyone, um, that we're, we're going by and we can do that and. You know, not signing it tonight is, you know, I think just sort of my working assumption anyway, cause I really do wanna beef up the agreement to. Really have in there what we promised, uh, tonight.
Fabric paper.
Fabric paper, everything, every detail counts.
The, the weightiness of the season.
Yeah.
That is not intense like.
We'll convert all of these questions as, as well as that, um, just in terms of canvassing all the landowners, whether or not they're. You know, giving us access or not, uh, certainly, uh, we're gonna deal with everyone's services, so.
Even just the awareness, I mean, how would you feel if a, a Green Mountain Power truck started just digging up your road and you're like, what is going on? Now they're putting a pole in my driveway, I, you know, I'm not sure that people would appreciate that, and who are they gonna yell at? Not you. Yeah, on us, so.
No, understood, I think, uh, you know, it's. Coming to you first really gives us a sense of, okay, well, you know, this is something that, you know, um, we're collectively looking at. And the conversation's a little bit different with the landlords at that point.
Yeah. Yes.
From the, I don't understand, when I just asked that the, the impact on the traffic was as minimal as possible, but depending on when in October. You could still be in the middle of leaf season, that's our busy, busy time for us around here, and it's not something. That we wanna see have a negative impact on our business.
And, you know, we work with Travis too, I mean, I think our, you know, when you do covert replacements, closing half the road, we always have traffic control in tow, so. Um. Also including, and if we have to come out and, you know, do any trimming around people's services, what have you, uh, we always have traffic control. Until, but that'll be another sensitivity that, that we add in, starting about the middle of September, you know, as things roll.
Yeah, because a lot of those roads are quite scenic, so, and there's, they do get a lot of. Just dry.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the rest of the board feel about the agreement?
Yeah, I, I think it's good to vent it for two weeks, I'm sure the paper will write up a wonderful article about it. So people know and it'll be on the website.
Like daddy Chris then, and I would encourage, uh, so could you be here by Zoom via Zoom in two weeks at least?
I'm down here quite a bit anyway, um, we have projects, we're already started, we have, uh, we're working on Route thirty and we'll be in the PH four eight in town. But that as well, so I will come back.
So my only last question. Is, what is the drawback of being underground, there's gotta be some sort of drawback. It used to be cost. Was, what if something goes wrong on the ground, water gets in, it's the middle of winter, is it more of a? Project than just lines in the areas? That's what I've always wondered.
It's a sealed conductor. Um, so certainly we don't expect faults, right, so it's a costly, you know, you're paying for a technology. That's reliable, so really the only place we would assume, uh, is splice coins and those are cabinets, we'll have to figure out where those are. Those need to be, you know, on high ground, just the way that, that the cabinets are built to prevent any sort of. You know, water back down into our conductors and so forth, so can't promise a hundred percent, but. In our runs of a thousand to fifteen hundred feet, you know, if there's an issue, um, you know, you can certainly isolate it and, and, um.
That's my only, that's my only thing, you know, power coming out of the ground up above, you can just kick the line, whoop, whoop, whoop. Done, if it's underground, you gotta dig it out, cause you can't pull that wire through, cause something's wrong with the conduit. You gotta figure it out, it seems like it'll take a lot more time. So that's my only. Thing that I'm asking, we spoke that.
And I can, I, and I will, uh, get some anecdotal information as well, just, you know, we can talk about it again on the back.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't want the homeowners coming to us, well, why did we do this, we said this would be a great idea, select. And now we don't have power for, uh, how to do that, you're calling me and staying in my house, so.
Okay, Sarah then Dan.
So in terms of notifying all of the property owners, what's the procedure you're gonna be following so that all of the. Impacted, I mean, are we, we're gonna depend on our own paper and you're gonna actually reach out?
Yeah, we can reach out either, uh, by phone, these are all customers of ours, you know, so we have their contact information, so, uh, a combination of. Telephone, uh, certainly there are a number of people that live out of state, uh, we can try door to door, but by whatever, those are our meetings, you know. Uh, certainly probably won't do a letter writing campaign, um, but, so it's gonna be telephone, email, not door to door.
Okay.
Perfect.
Dan.
Up by Woodsman, by the school, you can see the cabinets along the side of the road. You know, and we've already done that, so it's obviously something that's happened already, you know, now where. When they did develop.
But that's private road as well. Okay, so if you could be back here in some form on, on, in two weeks, which is the fifteenth. Um, I would encourage. Uh. Anybody who has any comments, concerns, questions, anybody in that area who might be impacted by this. To attend the meeting, send in your questions in advance, however you wanna do it, to communicate to. Um, us that we, or do it yourself in person, so I really hope that people. If they have questions, it's a really good time to, um, ask them, sure, so.
And I would just offer, again, if there's any interest in any sort of site visits, uh, we did that with, with Townsend there, they only have other towns so far that asked for that, but certainly. You know. Will be available over the next couple of weeks, but I'll have this re-grafted and back to Jeanette this week and, uh. Look forward to you when it's seen on the fifteenth, and I assume, uh, that you'll be expecting all landowners to be contacted, so that, that would be our mission between now.
We really think that's important, yeah, we have, we've had, um, companies who wanna bring, you know. High-speed internet and, you know, we, we've made that contact, so we, uh, we think it's important. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And we'll see you in two weeks.
All right, thank you.
All right. Economic development, we're gonna have the Bytown marketing update. Sorry, we're, we're running late.
That's quite all right. So we've been really busy this year with the, uh, committee, is getting the word out about Deerfield Valley and. Um, just wanted to give you guys a quick update now that we have had ads running for a few months, just on. What we have out there and whatever it looks like. So. See, can you guys see it behind me?
Uh, yes.
Perfect, all right. So, first part of it is Google Ads, last year we did run Google, but we didn't have a full year worth of time to get it in. Cause we started this program and probably met April and May, um, so this year we've got the full year going, so the graph that you see is from. Uh. January second all the way through last week. Uh, we broke it up so that we were spending different money in different parts of the year, so thirty dollars a day during the peak season, ski season. Um, that was basically up till the end of February, then brought that down to twenty dollars a month for March and April, so. That's why, you know, you see pretty consistent here and then a little drop, that wasn't because ads weren't performing well, that was something that we did. Um, in-house and dropped that down, saving a little bit of money during March and April. And then picked back up at the beginning of May, um, and running forty dollars a day, so you see that big jump up here. So we've been pretty consistent right along, um, with our impressions and our clicks. Earlier in the year, you see clicks are a little higher than the impressions, which is mostly people that are here during ski season. They're typing in things to do near Mount Snow or, uh, things to do in Deerfield Valley, it's not on the top search list, but. Where to eat in Deerfield Valley, things like that, so they're a little bit more already here and a little bit more targeted, um, so we're getting, you know. Higher clicks than the impressions versus once we start kind of that May piece where people were trying to get people thinking about coming here. Um, those are the ones that are just typing in things to do in Vermont or visit Vermont. And that's where you see, you know, our clicks and impressions kind of running on a very similar path for the rest of the summer. So all in all, really good, you know, over fourteen thousand clicks, so fourteen thousand six hundred people or so. That have gotten to the website, uh, you know, through Google Ads for us for this year. Big, you know, piece of our marketing is digital ad campaign, um, so we broke it up into four segments this year, started a little bit earlier than we did last year. So started on April tenth and ran our first phase till June eleventh, um, just on Meta. We then ran, you know, another phase from June twelfth to June twenty-third that just ended, uh, that expanded. Meta out into a test market in New Jersey and Philadelphia, which did really well, so we'll be looking at that down the line, whether that's a market. We wanna continue to, you know, uh, drive our advertising to, and we also picked up our TikTok campaign. Um, in that phase two. Phase three just got started about, you know, a week ago in August, and that'll run right up until Labor Day. Where we'll switch over and start thinking about fall stuff and trying to drive people here for the fall. Um, and running that till October fifteenth, right after that Columbus Day date. Um, so hopefully that lines up well with foliage, but you can never really tell, we do have an organic social media budget as well, so. If it's really late this year and, you know, we see that we're gonna run past October fifteenth, we do have some additional budget that we can spend in-house. To continue driving that message and continue getting people here during that foliage season. So this just shows how we broke it out, you know, started off a little bit lower in April, but then ramped up and spending, you know, in the eleven thousand range. Per month, um, we did originally budget when I came to you guys last November for seventy thousand dollars for media buy. Over the last, you know, few months, we've done some other projects that we had budgeted in and we were able to find some cost savings in some of those projects. As well as once we closed out the books from last year, had some additional savings there, so we were able to take another seven, seventy. Five hundred dollars from those cost savings and put that into our ad campaigns, cause that's where we feel like. Our money is the best spent and really wanna, you know, make sure that that's successful, so. We did increase this total bottom line of seventy thousand to seventy-seven five. Uh, with that additional six thousand in Meta for August and September and October and another fifteen hundred in TikTok. So phase one, we, you know, again, started that in April, so thought about the things that people, if they wanted to come up immediately, could be doing. So kind of concentrated on some of the hiking, but also started to think about summertime and boating and ice cream and that type of thing as well. Um, so we, you know, for Meta have different family and young adult ads, so targeting different audiences with. Um, you know, um. Sorry, but ads that, you know, are more targeted for them. So that was phase one, phase two then started in June, kind of right around when the kids got out of school, we saw a really big increase in that time of year. Uh, last year where kids, you know, were a week out again and out of school and our numbers went way up for clicks, so we wanted to have new. Uh, ads right out at that time so that people were re-engaging with us and, you know, bringing it back to top of mind during that time. So this was phase two, starting to think about those summer picnics, um, you know, being out on the water more and again, just the biking, biking. All of our, our big categories that we usually cover. Same thing with young adults, you know, thinking about, um, the summertime and ice cream here, being out with friends and. Again, enjoying the water. So then phase three, now that we're in the heat of summer, you know, when we have just the feed, we really wanted to concentrate on that lake. Um, and, you know, people are really thinking about how to cool off during that month of July and, uh, early August, so targeted that. And again, um, you know, the other categories were biking, paddling, sports and some hiking stuff. And very similar with the young adults. So that's what we've had out in markets, one thing we did do this year that we learned from our media company was Facebook's algorithms. Uh, go through a learning phase, so when phase two was winding down, instead of just turning off phase two. We turned on phase three but left phase two running, cause that was already optimized in the algorithm. So that way, phase three could begin to learn without negatively affecting our overall performance, so. We did see some good results there and not as much of a spike, um, in our numbers by doing that. We also went into TikTok this year, if you remember last year, we did a little bit of test, so this year we put a, a little bit more money in, about fifteen thousand. Out of that seventy-seven, so we had our phase one ad, which is, you know, a quick fifteen second TikTok video. Just some great shots from the photo shoot that we did last year. This did well, but one of the things that we did learn was, you know, TikTok swi- swipers like to swipe quickly. And so we wanted to get more activation in the beginning, so where in that video you saw the tagline at the end. Um, you know, we brought some of our more higher interest. Um you know, we brought some of our more higher interest activities like boating and biking. As well as that tagline into the beginning of the video this time, to try to get people from swiping away. And that's been successful so far, and you know, the week and a half that it's been up and running. So those are our TikTok videos. So so far, overall, ad campaign wise, we've done twelve million impressions this year. Just under thirty thousand clicks, so thirty thousand additional people to our webpage thinking about coming here. Um at a click-through rate of point two four percent, which is really good, and a dollar thirty nine cost per click. So really satisfied with that so far, you know, we did go away from display this year. Last year, you know, that drove us a lot of impressions, which is great, but didn't really result in people getting to the website. So that's why we concentrated more on Meta this year, put a bigger chunk of our budget into that, and it is paying off, you know, with a higher click rate. So because we started things different last year, it's about a different amount of money, it's hard to, you know, say apples to apples. How many clicks did you have at this time last year? So what I did was broke it down for you guys based on pace. And basically, you know, last year we spent seventy thousand dollars, you know, there was an additional sixteen five from the state, but I'm not including that in here. So we can, again, try to get apples to apples as close as possible. So this year, our total budget's seventy seven five, we've currently spent seventy, uh sorry, forty thousand, about eight hundred. So about fifty two point six percent of the budget. So I took those numbers that you saw here and basically just put them into, if we continue on the same pace, where are we gonna end up at the end? So overall, think about, you know, our budget, we're spending ten percent more this year, a little more than ten percent. But pace wise, you know, if we end up continuing with that pace, we'll be sixteen percent up on impressions. So gain an additional six percent of impressions and, you know, gain an additional seven percent of our clicks. So even though display was really, we were getting the impressions, we actually are still up in that category. And then, you know, again, clicks where we really want the most activation uh were up there as well. So really happy with that, and you know, again, this is just a projection, but hopefully we can continue on this trend uh right through that October fifteenth date. Other initiatives that we worked on this year, we had a rack card made, um we did that in-house. And that's been in the Guilford Welcome Center, as well as the Wilmington uh Welcome Center. Um from June first through October thirty first, so it's nice to have presence down there. Guilford sees over four hundred thousand visitors per summer, um so, you know, we thought it was important to get something in there. Let people know about Southern Montier Field Valley. Also, we're able to get a display case for the month of July down there, so that's what we see here. So we've got a nice big, you know, sign in one of their display cases, as well as highlighted, you know, the current event. Blueberry Festival, people are coming through in July and wanted something to do, but also then, you know, put up something about wine and harvest. So that they can, you know, if they were just passing through, can be thinking about, maybe I should come back for that later on in the year. Other big initiative we did was a visitvermont.com training, so we really wanted to focus on getting the word to everyone in town. As much as possible about our website and how um, you know, they can send people there. One of my biggest pet peeves is always overhearing that conversation where someone asks a staff member and they go, yeah, there's not much to do. Wrong answer, right? If if nothing else, visitvermont.com, so that was really our our big push this summer for the locals was to try to get that message out. So we created a video um that we sent out to all businesses, and we had nineteen businesses that participated in that program. So we got over a hundred and fifty employees that saw that video, learned that message, or hopefully spreading that message to our guests that come through. This was one of those areas where we were able to save a lot of money, you know, it was a twenty five hundred dollars or so um quote that we received. And we said, let's try to do it in-house, so we were able to save that twenty five hundred and put that towards that seventy five.
Joe donated a face.
He was, yes.
Yeah, so the. Right?
Yeah.
So, you know, there it's hard to get people involved and, you know, so we wanted to do something that involve some of our local businesses. As well as get, you know, these people that maybe they're new employees, maybe they just didn't know about the reservoir, maybe they just haven't been out on it. So we were able to work with I L Jet Ski and be able to offer uh an afternoon out on a pontoon boat with them. As well as two one up to two hundred dollars in uh food from any shop in Wilmington or Dover that they could bring out. And just have, treat their employees to a nice afternoon out on the lake. So hopefully, you know, then they're coming back and telling every all the uh the visitors about what a great time they had with I L Jet Ski. With whoever they bought the food from, etc. So really happy with that that initiative. So end result, you know, website visitors is a great way just year over year to look at how we're doing, how many people we've got. So if you remember back two slides ago, you know, we got about seven percent more clicks than last year at this point, so that's great. We're thirty percent higher in overall website visitors, so again, seven percent uh increase from our paid advertising is excellent. But all our other initiatives that we've been working on, whether that's people driving through this winter and seeing banners in town and going, ooh, visitvermont.com. What's that? Or, you know, the new employees, you know, you know, and that initiative, or somebody picking up a rack card in Guilford. We've picked up another twenty three percent of website visitors, people that are either wanna come here or are aren't here. And wanna know more about what to do, where to go, all that stuff, so really happy with this number. And, you know, hopefully that we can continue to get more and more traffic onto that website. So that's what I've got for you guys, any questions?
Thank you. That's that's nice, it's nice to have an update every once in a while and mid mid-season, it's it's great too, cause then you can get a flavor for where. Where everything is trending, we don't know yet, but it's great, you know, it's good.
Perfect, we wanted to wait just long enough that we would have some data, you know, to be able to share with the.
Mm-hmm, gotcha.
So I just, did did you guys see the video that Tim put together?
Yes, I watched it, yes, and I told everybody in my office to watch it, we didn't register, but we all watched it.
And that's why I think overall, there was like a hundred and twenty or so from the forum that said they watched it, but so many other people have said to me. Well, I didn't wanna enter the raffle, which was fine, but, you know, so I estimated that there was over a hundred and fifty, you know, staff members that didn't see it.
Uh just a a couple of questions, when when they give you um information, I mean, obviously they're giving you clicks and stuff. How are they giving you time, honestly, how do you know they just swipe through the TikTok thing? I I I don't really, you know, like, how do you know they just swipe through it or whatever?
Every every platform's different, so like on TikTok, I can go into our account and look at a graph that shows me. You know, the exponential graph of timeline, fifteen seconds and.
Okay.
You know, X number percent of people watched one second, X number of people watched two seconds, and so on.
They're just on TikTok?
Just on TikTok, the Facebook ads are, you know, they're static, so there's no like watch time or anything like that. Um but again, I think the click-through rate is probably a good indicator there, you know, that imprinting, it's, you know, you click through rates. Basically, you're how many people that saw it actually clicked, so as long as that percentage is staying high.
Quarter of a percent, was that what?
Quarter of a percent, yeah, which is industry standard, you know, and that that actually is a little bit down because of TikTok. Our Facebook one is more in the point three two percent, um which is good. It sounds really low, but you know.
This is, um I know Bill has their own agenda and everything, but it's like Mount Snow able to watch that Visit Vermont thing, get that out there to all their employees. When they do their bail training and all that, could we get Brian? Play that, you know? So.
Every business in town was sent the video.
Anything else, Tim?
I appreciate the initiative to do that, because it is a culture thing that we have to get on our head, there's nothing to do. Because just imagine, if you go somewhere vacation, oh, there's nothing to do here, you don't wanna hear it, so we have to change that culture. So I think that was a great initiative, I just hope, yeah, put up, maybe initiative next year of putting together dates, you know, so. You're here for three days, you can do these three things.
Yep.
You know, so people have things to go do. That's definitely on our list, is creating itineraries, and I've done some drafts going, um but that's gonna be the next step, is having itineraries. That are, you know, really.
So you pivot to this.
Right. Or a young adult versus, you know, family with, you know, kids, you know.
Yeah, we've been there, yeah.
But yeah, thank you, Joe, there is a ton to do here, we all just do it in our daily lives, so it becomes second nature to us. We don't think about how exciting it is for somebody that hasn't been, so.
Great.
Awesome, thank you guys.
Anything else, Eric, from economic development? Okay, we're gonna move on into the Board of Liquor Control. All in favor?
Aye.
We have a special event permit for Putney Mountain Winery for the September twenty third Wine and Harvest Festival. Any. Motion to approve the special event permit for Putney Mountain Winery for September twenty third of the Wine and Harvest Festival. Any discussion, all in favor? Motion to come out of liquor control. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have a consent agenda, we need to approve the minutes of July eighteenth, twenty twenty three. Uh motion to approve the minutes of July eighteen. All in favor?
Aye.
We have warrants from July twenty second, twenty twenty three for two hundred and fifty five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and fifteen cents. Motion to approve the warrants of July twenty second for two hundred and fifty five thousand, two hundred and eight. Two fifty five thousand, two hundred and eight dollars and fifteen cents, second. No discussion? All in favor? FYI, concerts in the park, Jacksonville Blues Band, August sixth, which is Sunday at two P M. Wild Nights are on Wednesday evening on the night of August, and Social Medication, August thirteenth at two P M. That's another Sunday. The Trails are recommending meet next week on August eighth at six thirty P M, yes, Eric?
There's a pretty good chance that may be.
Maybe.
Maybe.
And the planning commission's gonna meet on August fourteenth at six thirty P M. Do we have any liaison reports? I am not aware of an executive session. So I'd like to adjourn this meeting at seven thirty three.